We set?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning. Thank you for joining us for the NRHA Board of Commissioners meeting. We are broadcasting this meeting live on a virtual platform. For your reference, all information shared today is available online at www.nraha.us in the Board of Commissioners section. We will allow kind of for public comment here very shortly. Virtual participants will have an opportunity to raise their hands to comment. Attendings may also use the chat feature to make their comment as well. So again, thank everyone for attending today. Got a couple of things in our agenda is update for Tidewater Gardens CNI, resolution authorizing increased funding for security. We will also have a closed session. And so now I will open for the public comment period. Again, virtual participants, you'd like to make a comment, please click on the raise hand icon on your screen and you will be called upon. You can also type a comment into the question box on your screen as well. When called upon, please address the virtual room by stating your first and last name, address, and your comments. Please know that if there are questions asked during the time, they may not be responded to, but instead we'll make arrangements to follow up with you after the meeting to address those questions and concerns. Do we have any virtual people?
Mr. Speaker, at this time, we have three in-person speakers. The first is Carol Wilson from Franklin Arms Midrives, and her topic to discuss is Franklin Arms Midrives.
All right. Come on up, please.
Good morning, Commissioner. Let me see my other Franklin Cross Midrives on San Diego, the state of the building, the community. Since we're rad, things are not strange.
Can you give us an example or two?
We still have apartments that don't have stopper conditioning. We had Ray move in maybe about three months ago, and he took his pair of apartments to someone, everything could be done. He doesn't have the stopper conditioning. And I know for sure all these things are available at my time. On the third of the past, the last month, we had a business program and shoot for the, I'm nervous.
Relax.
The shoot for the back then, for before, usually about nine o'clock. I went there, was downstairs, got rid of my belongings and came back. We come to the building and there, the maintenance man was having a great time with management, another worker, and residents. His job, when he comes in the morning, is go to trash chute and open each floor and open up for residents. It was not done. Ten o'clock, the trash chute was still not open. Ten thirty, the trash chute was not open. I, when I came to the back building, I asked the sequence of the manager. I came, I said, our trash chute's closed, let's say. Oh, 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 I'm getting this show, so do it right away. It never got done right away. We had, at one time, Franklin had four tables down between rooms. Now we have two. People dropped trash on the floor. I'll pick it up, because all the things you soak in water clean your hands. A lot happened that didn't happen before we ran. I'm not blaming on management, I'm not blaming on the maintenance department, but something is done. It could've fallen apart. I watched the news today, forced it. I think it was, the apartment complex, they put everybody out and they're, I don't want that to happen, Franklin. I've been there since December 2012. I love that place. I want to retire, maybe move back to Connecticut, but until I do that, I want the same Franklin I moved into in 2012. Another thing, the outside trash chute, I usually clean out back there and I stopped doing it, but for three weeks now, I'm open. Dog feces, the human feces, but they're different three weeks. Maintenance is secure, because it smells. It's got odor, but it still smells. A lot needs to change. I don't know what rad has done. I don't know what's going on, but I want a better Franklin, not a worse Franklin. We were guaranteed every apartment, there's a free refrigerator, no refrigerator. It had nothing done. The people who did the carpet, my carpet company's come up, it has ripples in it throughout the whole primary apartment. Those things that, anyway, those that are, that need to be replaced. I want the Franklin I changed to in 2012. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll ask someone to get back to you on that. Yeah.
Mr. Speaker, our second speaker is Moten Johnson, Arman Avenue, Norfolk, Virginia, and her topic to address is communication.
Go on, yeah. Good morning.
I was just wondering what to be done about getting our emails blocked. We sometimes try to share stuff with y'all that we hear from residents or things that we think might need media response, and anytime someone, me or my colleagues, it comes back with a stop sign from Google Gmail, and it says that @newvirginmadrid.org is blocked. So I don't know if y'all did it or if it happened during the call, but anytime it's sent anyone to NRHA email, it comes back.
Okay. We'll look into that. Thank you. Thank you.
Our last in-person speaker is Mr. Raytron White of 3149 Hubel, Terrence.
I'll be right. Are you unable to locate Mr. White at this time?
I'm going to close the public comment period, and then I will speak directly with Mr. White.
Okay.
That section. I guess now we'll move on to the CNI update.
Oh, you want me to, you want me to do my?
Oh, that's direct.
I can do. I'll have a few. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, guests. Let's have a couple of updates. Personal being just staff shortages that we're still having to deal with, and luckily hasn't impacted our operations as much as it did previously, but we're still having to deal with that. Currently, we have about seventeen positions that are still open, primarily in maintenance. We just had a hard time attracting the maintenance. We haven't had a problem with administrative positions, but we have a hard time going the maintenance positions. And so we've tried a number of different things. We're going to try something else, and we hope it's a lot more impactful, to make it more attractive, to be able to come here to work at NRHA. And also, the other PHAs in the areas don't have, you know, the same issues related to being able to attract the maintenance. And, you know, we tried to sign on bonuses and things like that, but those things have done good. Probably comes down to just, you know, putting the pay to market pretty much to be competitive. That's really about the only thing that you can do. So we're looking at a couple of things along those lines. And then just, just in terms of turnover, we've had since the past year, we've had fifty-two separations from NRHA and forty-nine of them being involuntary, three months, forty-nine being voluntary and three being involuntary. So that just lets you know sort of the volatility of our staffing that we have to deal with. The second I wanted to talk about was the Board of Commissioners. I know that there've been, at least I know for the past month or so, it appears that, you know, there've been a number of things going on about the composition of the Board of Appointments. And the only thing that I know for certain, and I know Don wants to add anything to it, is that at the last council meeting through ordinance, they did expand the number of seats on the Housing Authority, from seven to nine. And I think the question came up as to the reason why that wasn't happening. And I think there was, the explanation given was that the Housing Authority traditionally used to be a redevelopment agency, a lot, on behalf of the city, on a lot of projects. I think East Beach was mentioned as a project, and as well as a couple of other areas that the Housing Authority worked with to redevelop certain areas within the city. But, and they went on to say that the Housing Authority no longer fulfilled that role, at least to the level that they did back in the past, that were primarily a housing agency working with residents. And so they want to appoint people on the board who could assist the Housing Authority in that effort and working with the residents. So that was the primary reason why, for the expanding the board. Other than that, I don't know, anything officially, I haven't received anything officially in terms of actually who's going to occupy the seats. And that's one thing that we're waiting on. And I think it was mentioned that they wanted to at least take that action first, expand the board, and then make the appointments after that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And then just, just a couple of other things, following up on the strategic retreat that we had, and I did mention, we had the, I think we had the six, we had the six goals we were forming, task force teams. The goal is to actually come to the board in September with our ninety-day action plan for, you know, things that we're going to do in the short term. And that's sort of going to be revolving things that we're going to try to achieve under each one of the goals, different strategies and things like that, that go over the three to five-year period, but at least we want to make a start, let you all know that some of the things we want to address in immediate, immediately, within the next ninety days, that we'll be able to present that to you all in September. We're not having, just to remind you, we're not having an August meeting. And then the last thing, I wanted to recognize staff at the properties, the Hunter Square Midrives, Sykes Midrives, and Bobbitt Midrives. The normally have what they call the REACT physical inspections of our public housing properties, and that was put on pause due to the pandemic. They resumed those at the beginning of this year. So those three properties, Bobbitt, Sykes, and Hunter Square, they received ninety scores of ninety and above on recent REACT inspections. So I just wanted to recognize staff, management, maintenance, and everyone else involved in that effort, and we're going to recognize them tomorrow at a point in time.
Good.
I just wanted to let you all know, despite all the, you know, the issues that we've had with, you know, maintenance personnel and things like that, they've done a great job to be able to at least achieve those scores of those three respective properties.
Please pass on our appreciation of what they do as well.
Okay. That's all.
All right. Commissioner comments? All right. And we'll move on to the development, which is on page seventeen of your packet. I'm going to speak to him. Yeah. Mr. May, can we hook in Mr. Majors?
Good morning. How's everyone? Can you all hear me?
Hi. Hey, John. Yes, sir.
All right. I don't know, is Steve Morales there? Does Steve, you want to tee it up, or you want us to just jump in?
I'll do the quick tee up. We are in the, in the housing planning and development as part of the CNI project. The project is moving forward. We've got the first two onsite developments, nineteen, Block nineteen and twenty underway, under construction. Block seventeen has its tax credit award, and will be going to close early next year and starting construction early next year with seventeen as well as eighteen. So that's phase one and phase two. Phase three, we just got awarded tax credits for Block nine, and will be submitting for the four percent non-competitive very soon, so that's phase four. And that'll also be closing next year and starting construction. And so of the four phase onsite phases, we've got three in hand where we're in pretty good speed, where we've got our tax credits, or, you know, have to go to the non-competitive round and get the remaining tax credits. They're working on the design drawing and getting, getting them down that road, so we've crossed most of the hurdles. The last phase, phase four, is what John's going to be talking about today. They're in the design work now. And so John's going to be previewing some of this material, some initial work now for the board. That is what we're going to be going for competitive tax credits next year, so that they can start construction in twenty-fourth. So John's going to be just going through the site plan and some images of the, of where we'll be going. And again, these are actually on the Tidewater blocks, and these are more of the family units that we'll be doing. But John, I think, I think I got it there. Matisse is going to pull up the presentation.
Okay. You guys have it, or you want me to try to do a share screen?
To do a share screen.
Share screen, please.
All right.
Share screen.
Okay. And is Troy McGee on from Torrey Galus? I think Troy was going to be on. Okay. Let's, I'm trying to figure out.
Troy is on, but we're waiting.
Okay. I.
Yeah, yes, someone. Hi, how are you?
Good. I'm trying to figure out how to do the share screen in go-to meeting.
Do you get the menu right?
No. So there is a section at the top that says sharing, audience view, sharing, and just open that box up, and then you can, there is a section that says show screen, and just select show screen.
Hmm. I'm not seeing that. So let's see webcam, audio, attendees, chat.
This is not, this is not the, we're going to pull it up locally.
Okay. Sorry about that, guys. I, I thought that that's the way we were going to do it. Okay. So it looks like we're, we've got it up. Okay. So, good morning, everybody. As Steve mentioned, Troy McGee from Torrey Galus, and I will walk you all through what is effectively phase four of the, of the development. This is the last, the fourth of four phases. Each phase is two transactions, a nine percent transaction and a four percent transaction. Before we jump into that, though, I did want to take a second to acknowledge and give major kudos and thank you to both Ron and Steve for attending the Virginia Housing Board Meeting. It looked like in the final rankings that this next phase, phase three, Block nine was not going to receive nine percent tax credits, and Ron and Steve and, and other stakeholders all really, you know, made the case to Virginia Housing how important this deal was. So I just want to say again, thanks, Ron and Steve. That was really incredible and important work. So what we're going to show you here is a work in progress. We're still working on the design pieces of this, but, you know, we're, we're moving it along. We'll go to ARB in August. After that, we may need to go back to ARB. I think we're just going sort of information only in August. We'll get their feedback, we'll come back. After that, it's City Planning Commission. Then normally around December or so, we're at the city council meeting to get the rezoning, conditional use permit, et cetera. And then, as Steve mentioned, in March of 2023, we will actually be submitting the nine percent application for this deal to, to Virginia Housing. So if, so that's the timeline. If we want to, can we just jump into the next slide? Okay. And so if you look at this slide, what you're seeing here in the top row, well, the high level for this slide is this is what we've got quote unquote remaining to build, or this is what we've got left to, to, to design and build. So the top line, the seven hundred and fourteen units in that configuration is sort of, that's the assignment. That's what we, we've said we were going to deliver. The middle row is all of what's in progress. So that's Block nineteen and twenty that's currently under construction, Block seventeen and eighteen that Steve mentioned, and then Blocks nine, Block ten sixteen, which Block nine was, I just talked about just getting its nine percent tax credit. So what we have left is Blocks four, five, six, and two, and then Blocks three A, three B, and eleven, and that's what we have left to deliver. And, and that's what Troy's going to walk us through right now. So, next slide, please. And Troy, I'll let you take over, and if you don't mind, I'll may, I may jump in from time to time for some color commentary.
Okay. That would, that would be great. Once again, good morning, everyone. So this first slide that you're seeing, and I'll say just the first couple of slides, is just to refresh everybody where we left off previously, as John and Steve were just talking about Blocks nine, ten, and sixteen. So this first slide that you see is an existing aerial view looking northwest of the sun. Next slide, please. And then this is an aerial view looking southeast, just to refresh your memory. What you see here, the brown and white building, that's Block nine, and that is the multifamily building there along Church Street, or actually at the intersection of Church Street and the Freemason, Freemason Extension. And then you just, to the north of that, the blue and white building, that is Block sixteen, and you see the plaza area there, where a portion of the Blue Way, Green Way will extend it to that plaza area, so that you have this syncing up with the Green Way, Blue Way, along with the residential development that we have here. Just jumping back to the brown and blue building that you, brown, I'm sorry, brown and white building that you see there in Block nine, you'll also see some smaller type buildings, which we call carriage homes, as you go along Freemason. That's also part of Block nine. And then, as you continue to move eastward, the next block was Block ten, where you have a combination of smaller apartment buildings, and we also have what we call, yet even smaller apartment buildings, that we call mansion homes, as well as the introduction of town homes.
And one thing that I will say is that this is, so this is what, what you see on the screen, that's phase three, and what we're going to talk about today is phase four. And as we move through that very quickly, I'm glad Troy went through, you know, sort of a little more detail, because a lot of these design elements will be, you'll, you'll see this again. I, I learned a new term from our architectural term team, kit and parts, right? So a lot of this is like, the building types will be reused, so that all of phase three and phase four will, will seem like an integrated neighborhood. So maybe we kind of push through?
Yes. Okay. So with this slide, this, this is, you know, where we started with our, our site planning, our master planning exercise of drilling down, or I should say, really drilling down on a concept that we had planned even when we were submitting for the CNI application. And it goes with the classification of the streets, where Church Street, you know, working through the census-based design approach with the resident and other stakeholders, the Church Street is, is remade back as a main street, and that's where you will have the higher density mixed-use building types, and that's where you see the apartment buildings that are three and four-story, predominantly four-story. The orange color dash line that you see, that's at Freemason and Mariner Street, that are your secondary streets, and then we want the, the character of the, the buildings to support that, that, that type of character. And then you have the yellow streets that we are calling the neighborhood streets. One other note I just want to say here is just north of Mariner Street, you see that dark green line or, or rectangle area, that is one of the areas where we're doing tree saves. There are other areas throughout this plan where we're looking to do tree saves as well, but this is one where we have a series of existing trees along the existing Mariner Street. And we just, we all understand how critical that is. It brings instant value when we can save those trees. It brings shade, as well as just a historic connection for residents. Not to be confused with the dark green that you see along Church Street, that is a plaza area where we will have a series of, of trees as well, and a Hardscape Plaza space, but hopefully what you're starting to see here is that Green Way, Blue Way area. Again, it goes back to linking the Green Way, Blue Way with the residential piece, so this is all one cohesive project.
Next slide. I'm not controlling.
Oh, sorry, bud. Yeah, and I'm looking at you, so.
Yeah.
And this is where you just see the preliminary design where we left off last year. Again, you can see with the orange buildings, those are the more higher-density buildings. And as you start to move to the east, this is where you see a mix of the, what we typically call the lower-density buildings, where you have more of the town homes and mansion-type apartments located here. Next slide. This is just going back to looking at the view along East Mariner Street. You can see where we have the proposed Mariner Street tree save. Those are those existing trees that I was referring to in the previous slide, and then where you see the brick color building with the green color stoops and porch, that is actually Block, what we call Block ten, and that was part of phase three. And to John's point, this is where we're looking to take the elements, or the kit of parts that we have from, from phase three, and just continue that, those, those kit of parts in phase four as well. Next slide, please. And then this is just another breakdown that you can see of the housing types, how we've color-coded it so that everyone can see, you know, where we have the carriage house, carriage homes located, as well as the mansion homes, the smaller walk-up apartment buildings, and the distribution of the town homes. Next slide, please. This is also one of the images that we used as part of our resident engagement meeting last year to get more input from the residents, because that was one of our commitments, is even after the application was submitted, you know, we've all committed to continually working with the residents on, on the design of the neighborhood. And so this is where we got feedback showing a variety of, of building types. of, of the neighborhood. And so this is where we got feedback showing a variety of, of, of building types. Because we want to create a neighborhood that is vibrant and also diverse. Next slide. And as a result of that, that, those meetings, you can see that these were the series of designs that were created as part of phase three. And then I believe that when we go through the next slide, you can see a further breakdown of that. So we can go to the next slide. So here you see president images at the top of what we're calling the carriage homes. And then you can see the images below of, of what we created for phase A. This was also the buildings that were presented and approved by ARB, as well as by city council and city planning. Next slide, please. And then this is one of the versions of our townhomes. This is where we're, we're, we're keeping the townhomes two stories because this is what, another thing that we've heard from the residents, as well as from, from the city as well, that the preference is keep the, the units two stories rather than making them three stories. Because, you know, folks don't want to walk an additional set of stairs. And just part of what's typical for Norfolk is a two-story townhouse. Next slide, please. And then this is the mansion home. This is, this can range anywhere from having seven to nine units. And the intent is for this to look like a, a large house rather than an apartment building. Next slide. And then these are some of the smaller walk-up apartment buildings. These are buildings that range from 12 to 15 units. They are three stories in height. And I should also say the mansion how, mansion homes are three story in height as well. And so if you will, go back to that, when you see the little diagram on the side, this is where you can see also stepping down in height where you have the four stories along Church Street and the transit area. But then as you move east, this is where you have that combination of three and two-story buildings. Next slide, please. And this is, again, going back to the larger apartment buildings that we have. And some of the president images that we started with, and then based on that feedback, you can see the two images below were the results of that, that feedback and coming up with the design for those buildings. Next slide, please. And then what you see here is, again, what I was talking about earlier of how you have the Blue Way, Green Way, and then that's going to tie in with the outdoor spaces that, that we have throughout the residential development area. So that you have these series of moments throughout the plan, throughout the community. Next slide. And then this is just our concluding slide that again goes back to the variety of house types that we'll have to create a vibrant and diverse neighborhood.
Yeah, thanks Troy. I, I know, you know, we've, we spent a lot of time on that. I just want to make a couple of points. I, I'm, I'm really proud of, of what we just went through. Not only because I think Troy and the team have done a great job on the design, but all throughout what we just showed you is responsiveness to what we've heard from residents. So we heard over and over, and somewhat surprisingly to, at the level of intensity, how important the trees are in this area, especially some of the older residents when we did the naming conversations, things like that, just the importance of the trees came up over and over again. So you know, that's one of the things I'm really excited about being able to, to preserve here. I remember one of the conversations, I think it was held in the, in the YMCA, and a mom came in, she said she's had, I can't remember the number of kids, but she said, you know, I really want to be able to sit on my porch or my deck and look out and be able to see my kids playing. And so I'm glad that we're able to now bring some options. Not, you know, that's not going to be everybody's situation, but for some families, that's what they're going to want. And so now we're able to bring some of the, some of the options. So sort of getting to phase four, I'm glad, I feel like we're able to be responsive to many of the things that we heard throughout the years residents tell us. So Troy, thank you and thank the team. So thank you guys.
Thank you.
Hey, John, I assume from lot four or block four that the diocese property is still off the table?
So we are, it's, it's a very good question. We are basically building around the diocese property so that if that property does come into the mix, it will integrate well. But if it takes a longer time, or for whatever reason it doesn't, then, then the property will work just as well. You know, on, on it, on its own without having that, that western half of block four.
Thank you. Thank you. Other comments? All right. Thank you very much, guys.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, Rose, thank you. We have a quorum now. So we will go back to the beginning of the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes. And so that starts on page three. We need to do each set of minutes separately. So I'll take any comments on the June 16th minutes. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. So move.
Second.
You moved.
Ms. Carnes?
Yes, sir. Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Mr. Benassi?
Aye.
Ms. Harrington?
Aye.
Mr. Misaccio?
Aye.
Now we'll look at the June 30th Board of Commissioners minutes. Any comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. So move. Ms. Carnes?
Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Mr. Benassi?
Aye.
Ms. Harrington?
Aye.
Mr. Misaccio?
Aye.
All right. Then next, we will take a look at a resolution, increased funding for armed security. Donna Mills will lead us on that, I believe. That starts on page 37 of your.
Good morning.
Morning, Donna.
I apologize. I thought there was one other resolution before mine. Hi, good morning, commissioners. So yes, I am here for a resolution approval. I believe this is on page 41 in your packet.
And this is. Is it armed guard?
Yes, the armed security service.
It's 37 in the, in the new package.
Okay. That must be done with resolution.
We dropped one of the resolutions.
Gotcha. Okay, so we initially contracted with Century Force back in October of 2021 to help supplement the Norfolk Police Department and dealing with some of the current issues in our community. Initial contract amount is $168,352.80. We have come to you before with one change order back in December for about $42,000, which raised the contract total amount to $210,343.20. Today I'm coming back for an additional change order contract adjustment in the total amount of $234,518.40. This was to assist us with increasing our coverage in our communities. Thus we've seen increased criminal activity occurring throughout the city. And so with this contract adjustment, it will raise the total contract amount to $444,861.60, which is 164% over the original contract amount, which thus requires for commission approval for the resolution. I have this approved.
Obviously, this is going to be booked with your questions, Donna.
Yes, sir.
How many, what are we getting for our money? How many people are, are manning the site? Give me a description of what we're getting now. And obviously it's not working so good. And, and we're going to stay with the same firm?
We are at the Bright County.
Okay. Can you describe the staffing and the hours of operation so I can get a skip, get a scale of it?
Yes, and I have Karen Rose also on the line. Hopefully she can join us if she can chime in as well if I misspeak something. But we have, the roving security is two, usually two armed officers per roving time period. And they're there in the evenings and it rotates from at least 7:00 PM until 2:00 AM in the morning. And Karen can confirm if that's correct. Some of the sites we have done 24-hour coverage after the incident in Young Parish. We present it there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And we've also done that in High Water Gardens because of the relocation efforts. And we were having some issues with people breaking into the unit, causing damage, which was affecting the residents. So those two had 24/7 coverage. The other communities is the roving rotating. Karen Rose coordinates that schedule with the security company based on the need or what we think is appropriate for that week. And she does that with them every week.
So are these security guards, are, are these guys moonlighting police officers?
Not that I'm aware of. This is a contract with an actual company. Century Force is an actual security guard company and they are armed through that company. I don't believe that there are police officers working there. Karen, are Karen online? Karen, can you confirm that?
Yes. Good morning, commissioners. To answer your question, these are guards that are employed by the armed security company. They are not Norfolk police officers or police officers from any cities. Right now, the reason why we need this armed guard service is because we're unable to employ currently Norfolk police officers that would typically work our properties. They are not able to work part-time due to the difficult scheduling and shortages of the police department.
Are we paying a premium to have these private police versus off-duty police, Karen? And that's just a general question, knowing the shortage the police department has.
Yeah. What we're doing is we're trying to supplement presence in the communities of these armed security guards. Because this is a service now that the police department is not able to do.
And we have, we do have a contract with the Norfolk Police Department. We have seen the hours reduced significantly. I think everyone is aware of what's been reported through the, we got on the situation that the police department currently on your, you know, considerably short staffed. And so this was brought in to help supplement that. We are right around what our annual contract has been with the police department, which is around $500,000 to $600,000 with this company with what I'm coming to you with today.
Well, I, I didn't understand that. What do you mean? Do, explain what you just said.
We have a contract with the Norfolk Police Department as well. And so because we are paying based on coverage, the amount that we pay to the police department is a lot less than what the contract award was.
Okay, so we're premium.
And so this is just a part of the, us working on dealing with this issue. It's not going to solve the problem. It is a tool that we're using as well as looking at some other security features. Karen's very involved with looking at cameras. If we need to look at installing them throughout our community more than what we have now. We actually had a call yesterday with a vendor to look at that option. We are, she's also involved with Project Big Neighborhood to see how we can work with them to come up with some strategies to help deal with the crime that's in our community.
Who gave, who gave us the idea of two o'clock at the cutoff?
And Karen, can you confirm that? And I, that's why I have her on the call.
Oh, yeah.
She can confirm and clarify.
Yeah, absolutely. The times for the rubble patrol is 6:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Initially, when we started this contract, there again, we tried to supplement the presence of the police department in our communities. At that time, two o'clock was considered what we call peak hours. They're normally between 6:00 PM and 2:00 AM. So that's how that time was determined. I am in the process of looking at expanding those times. I'm really trying to look at the activity in the neighborhoods right now and look at those areas that are hotspots. And we all kind of know that at this time, they're communities downtown. We've had really increased activity over in Granite Village that we're trying to contend with. So I can say that this company is very good in adjusting, just with a phone call within a 10-minute period to switch directions and go where I need them to go. Unfortunately, that's the way that we have to work right now because we're unable to pin down most of the time where the shooter is going to occur. You know, it's now gotten to the point that sometimes I think there is shooting in one community as a diversion to send the police in one direction so they're able to get away faster in another community when they're shooting. So they're very savvy and we're trying to adjust to the times. I hope that answers your question.
And as we need to adjust the schedule, you will see me back here if that's, probably for another change.
So Donna and Karen, what is the difference? I, I'm glad you explained that there is an offset at some level with the city of Norfolk because we can't, they, they can't provide the service, so therefore we're paying them less. What is the delta between the increased security outside patrol versus what we're not paying the city?
So Karen, can you help, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe for last year, which just finished in June of 2022, we paid the city approximately $160,000 off. So if you add that to the 444 that I'm asking for today for a total contract, we're a little over the $600,000 that was originally contracted.
If we weren't, if the city was doing what they're supposed to with the proper staffing, what would be the, the budget of what we're spending? 600 now because we're having to supplement with the premium like Dick is talking about. What would it be if they were fully staffed?
The city of Norfolk Police Department, we would, I can't say whether we would have this contract or not. There's, the, the crime issue is an issue with the, the current police that they have. Knowing that there is a staff shortage with the police department. If they were fully staffed, and depending on what the crime level was, we may just have the contract with the police department, which is normally around $600,000 off. We may not have this contract. But it seems like in today's society, even with police departments that are fully staffed, crime is a problem everywhere. And then we have to figure out how we can address it from our.
And I'm not being critical of your choices here. I'm just trying to understand that here. I mean, this is a real big dollar scenario. And I'm, I still haven't heard the number because you said 600, then you said 600. That tells me that there is no premium, but it sounds like there is a premium.
I guess I'm not following.
Okay. We're, we're 160 to the city.
Correct.
440 to outside.
Correct.
If we were, if the city was doing, if, if the city was fully staffed, would we be paying $600,000 because we wouldn't be paying anything to the, to the outside agency?
Right. I can't answer that.
Okay.
Because what I'm, what I'm trying to, I guess the, the highlight is there is a criminal issue throughout this city, throughout this region. If the police department were fully staffed and we were paying just them the $600,000, if it was addressing all of our needs in our communities to protect the communities and make our residents safe, then that may be all we have to pay. I don't think that's the answer anymore. I think as an agency, we need to do still more, even if the police department is fully staffed. And so there may be expenses for additional officers or additional cameras. So there will be some other safety, security expenses, I think, that we would.
We're in just, I, I, thank you, Donna. You, we're not comparing apples to apples. We're comparing apples to oranges because we're living in a higher crime environment right now. Okay. I was trying to quantify it and it's not possible. Yeah. And you, we also have the Tower Gardens being demolished, which should be reducing the amount of coverage there. But, and that's a question, how much?
But and that's a question, how much vandalism and how concerning is that compared to bodily harm crime elsewhere?
So we have approximately seventy families left in Tyewater Gardens that still need to be protected. Right, because they're kind of populated in the back. We've also recently had issues where we've had vandals break into units, still compromised and flood the units that are around them, including units that residents are currently in, meaning they have no water services. So that's why we increased it there because we still have to continue to maintain safe housing with services. And we were having back to back vandalism that we were having to deal with. So the, the hope is the seventy families that are there, we're working with them now by the end of the summer, maybe September, they will all have been relocated. And of course, that property will come down, which would adjust the cost that we're spending there that we can put at the other communities as well. I hope that clarifies.
Yeah, it's.
This is a struggle right now.
It's a struggle.
Just trying to figure out the different components that we can bring to try to address this.
This is just a very, very big number, but it's a very big problem. I can't.
Go ahead, Karen.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify in reference to the contract with the police department. So that everyone understands that the contracts that we have are for the off duty police officers that are moonlighting. They volunteer to work on our properties. So we do our best to make sure that the funds are available every year so those officers are able to work off duty on our property, especially the CROs that are familiar with the property. However, there is no mandate that they have to work on our property. And I think today's culture has contributed to that even more, not just the shortage, but even those that work it may not want to work it as much because of the culture on the street. I just want to be perfectly honest about that. We can, we put the money out there to try to get the officers work to work that is our first preference. But however, understand, you know, these are the officers that volunteer to work. They're not mandated to be there. Thank you for your time.
Other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Donna. I will entertain a motion to authorize the increase.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Ms. Carnes?
Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Mr. Benassi?
Aye.
Ms. Arrington?
Aye.
Mr. Musachio?
Aye.
And again, thank you for the adjustments that need to be done, really. As you say, if this isn't arithmetic, you can't just add the same thing every time to get the right answer. So thanks for working through all of this.
Of course, and we'll see back to talk about future plans as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any questions starting on page forty with the previous month's activities, proposals? Any of those things? If not, any questions on the, or comments on the committee meeting notes? We are starting to get back into the communities and I think it's becoming very clear why that's very important that we continue meeting in the communities. So again, any other questions or comments? All right. If not, I'll go ahead and skip over the closed session and starting on page eighty three, there are a number of dashboards, vacancy maps, updates, the communications. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, I will ask Ms. Carnes to read the resolution about a closed session.
Yes, sir. Resolution convening a closed meeting on July fourteenth, twenty twenty two. Be it resolved that the authority will convene in a closed meeting pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended, the act, to discuss the following matters which are specifically exempted from public disclosure by the code section referred to below. Number one, personnel matters involving the assignment, appointment, promotion, demotion, performance, salaries or resignation of employees of the authority as authorized by section two point two dash thirty seven eleven A one of the act. Number two, consultation with the authority's legal counsel regarding actual or probable litigation and legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel as authorized by section two point two dash thirty seven eleven A seven of the act. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second, please?
Second.
Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Mr. Benassi?
Aye.
Ms. Arrington?
Aye.
Mr. Musachio?
Aye.
Again, we are going into closed session. That does mean that we are not to discuss any business. We usually take about five minutes for that. So I will go ahead and call the closed session. Five minute delay in, in order, and so we'll go ahead and do that. And I will talk to you, Raytron.
I'm sorry, Chairman, I want to see the whole entire board. I was getting paper somehow. I've got jammed back there. I don't know how it was performing back there. I have stuff to get you all, give you all, and it's very important, everyone.
Let's go ahead, let's go ahead. Can we do that now?
We're in closed session now?
What about closed session? I've been here all morning and I was just.
Wait, excuse me, we had the public.
I understand, I was trying to get it, but the staff.
I understand it went that way. Is there a?
Can, can we do that when we come back because Mr. Gresham left the room?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Can you give me?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. So again, folks, we're in the, going into, we're in the closed session now. What we'll do after the closed session, I'll open back up again. We'll take Mr. Raytron's comments and then we will close the meeting. Okay? All right. Again, we're in that five minute thing, so. Yes, if you go ahead and read, please.
Resolution certifying a closed meeting on July fourteenth, twenty twenty two. Whereas the authority has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas section two point two dash thirty seven twelve D. of the nineteen fifty Code of Virginia as amended requires a certification by this authority that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore, upon motion duly made and seconded, be it resolved that the authority hereby certifies that to the best of each Commissioner's knowledge, number one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were heard, discussed or considered in the closed meeting. And number two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered by the authority. May I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Mr. Benassi?
Aye.
Ms. Arrington?
Aye.
Mr. Musachio?
Aye.
All right, we're out of the closed session. I will now call Mr. Raytron White to come up. Again, for public comments, they will be limited to three minutes. They'll introduce themselves by name and address, identify a specific topic that they wish to talk about, and provide constructive feedback rather than unfocused criticism. Mr. White?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mr. Jackson. Thank you for allowing me to come back. I was, I want to apologize for not having my stuff, having to leave my office. So thank NRHS staff on this board for helping me out. I've got a couple of things that I want to share with you all today is, we have two things. There's a packet, I guess your assistant is giving it to you. That Mrs. Ashley Hopps, a resident, she's lived in the council twice. And they've heard some of our stories. And this is about some of the security functions that we're having in Grandy. We haven't had this kind of function in, I know, over fifteen years because I've been the president for twelve years. This recent year and early last year, we've had a lot of gun violence, people just shooting. I mean, people, the last incident was last Friday about five o'clock, young man in the area, only he's got shot in his leg. I did talk to, I wonder if Ms. Mills is still here, hearing me. I talked to some of the security companies. They said they're just out there, they don't know what they're doing, they're just out there. And there's no direction from their company what to do. I asked, I, three young men, they're African American men, and I told them, they want to ask about who was standing and all this stuff. So I called Ms. Karen Rose the other night. She gave me the number to get the officers. The guy there was black, he was young, he's walking around with a gun that you can see. So I did call them and the guy called me, hey, Mr. President, I got your number on my phone. I thought that there was a man, he wanted to ask to see who the guy was and ask to leave the neighborhood. So there's, there may be a disconnect of what they are supposed to do in the neighborhood. And I, I would ask the board to see if each neighborhood could do their own security at that time because at two o'clock, some of the actions are fired. And I think at six, some of the stuff, and some, some, and our neighborhood starts in pure daylight. So if we can get that in Grandy, because we're, if we're the leading neighborhoods in Norfolk, we should get to that, other best. And that's, this is some of the stuff you all can see in here, this is the gunshot and such intensive council. So that's for you all. And then there is kind of a problem at the city vice mayor, Mr. Thomas, vice man Thomas to come out to our neighborhood. NRHS sent this out, that's in your packet too, this program for the rec center. There's a problem with, I have a problem with that, that our office, the T M C of Grandy Village, the ones that have been working and moving this city for the last twelve years, was not invited to the table, was not told about this till it went out and to the kids to come to a building that was boarded up for an actual week. So I went to the city council and asked them what was the problem and it's a take for task, who's involved, who's where, about H R V might, all this might, I don't really care about it. At the end of the day, the residents are losing out of it somewhere, especially the kids. So they were performed, this was created, and I was told by Dr. Fowler and showing the residents and two council members, that was emailed sent to, from Mr. Tristan Pope to Mr. Kim Thomas, about the pool that he said, Kim, from the, to the Kim, oh, the Kim, she said, yes, that's the lady's name, in front of the residents because their president's been going to the council. Their stated was that the pool, the kids were not interested in the pool. The kids are interested in anything that's activity wise, they had enough for people for two years. So I think it was a really bad situation that email went out and the city told it. They told me about who said it and where it went out to and who responded back to it. I think, Mr. Jackson, I came to you about this and you really didn't know anything about it and I sent you this flyer this. This was a smack in the T M C face in Reggie Village. We should be a part of this, we want to help to make sure. I understand they got the building open, they got something done, but you know, open some, have programs for the children, programs for the residents to do and not have the kids in a building that's boarded up. We don't know what their circumstances are home. We shouldn't have settled for anything, we should settle for the basketball children. That's how their minds create when they're not in a closed facility. That's the board's board of, you don't know who's coming out the building, who's coming in. So, so when the city council came, today the boards are off. They're saying because of the rocks that's hitting this and all this, the kids broke the ones I know, I've seen them because they wanted to go in the rec center. And they went and broke in and they played ball in there with their own balls. So my thing was, we need to make sure that we do something. We have a lot of children in our neighborhood. We have a lot from young and Tyewater. And we need to make sure that our kids are having the right thing to do. We have our son, we have a pool, we have a basketball court, a basketball court, a playground, everything is closed. So why not come to the community and ask them what they want besides you doing something like this? And they got to stop it or they shouldn't have their own kids in our building, taking the kids on the trip and our kids got to go home. How are we doing it, Commissioner? How are they letting this happen, Mr. Jackson? How is this working? You know, I'm taking kids to the movies with my own money on Tuesday so they can have something to do, take the tide and we're going. I took the kids to this council, they asked them, what's going on in our neighborhood? Why we can't get the services like everybody else? If this was happening, came to my office and asked us what we could do, we could have had this. I did it for five years when they didn't give us the money for the, for the camp. NRHS paid half of it and Angela Williams paid half of it and I braved money to pay half of it. And what happened was, we couldn't afford the trip, so we took them on the trip. The city got with us and we planned it something. Well, I can't plan that with NRHS, there's something we can do for the kids, get the buildings open. We're right next door. So I really have a problem with that. So last thing I know, Norfolk State University doctor Austin, she called me, she called Mr. Thomas and Mr. Drew Norman. They had an event, they left on Monday. The kids got some joy, Ms. Arrington, she, they got some joy. Ten kids from Grandy, ten families from, ten kids, meaning two families, went and there were twenty other people from NRHS, they both, the kids were meeting trip. They had a blast, I got the picture, I wish I could get it to you. They had a blast, they were outside, they had a comfort zone, they're home, they went out. Mrs. Austin and the part of people from Norfolk State was her organization to ask our kids to go. And our kids went there to get their own transportation, which we got our own kids there. And the mom said, Raytron, you stayed, my kid's alive. Two of the kids were autism. They had all, they communicated with kids from other states and cities. This is something they did and invited us to come. That's the stuff we need to do in our own agency to have our kids do this, if we got money. And we have sponsors to help them do that. So I'm going to ask you all, Commissioner, when you see this stuff about this crime and all this stuff, please help our, our neighborhood because we're trying to do the right thing in Grandy Village. And if I'm the leader of it, I have the responsibility, the duty to come in and let you all know what, what thing the NRHS is not doing and what, what thing the city's not doing, what thing we are doing. Thank you so much. All right, thank you.
None of comments, Commissioners? All right, I will go ahead and call the July Board of Commissioners meeting to a close.